...County Board of Supervisors CIP Budget Work Session. Yeah, hold on a second. One of our -- well, that's what I was just gonna say, is it's supposed to be CIP or is it supposed to be CARES?
CARES, ma'am.
Okay, well, I'm reading off the copy here. Sorry, take two. I call the order to the King George County Board of Supervisors CARES Work Session, and Mr. Bush will be coming a little bit later, and he will be here shortly. Thank you. I call for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak at public comment? Please keep your comments to three minutes and state your name and your address. No one being there? Is there anybody online, Mr. Dines? Thank you. Does anybody have any correspondence? All right. With that being said, Ms. Kupka, we have a closed session. Could you please?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in closed meeting pursuant to State Code Section 2.2-3711A8 for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel concerning the appropriate allocation and distribution of CARES Act funding to localities in light of the current U.S. Treasury and U.S. Office of Inspector General's guidance. I invite the county administrator and county attorney because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any needs, chair of time? We are in closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
Mr. Bush, do you certify?
So certify.
Mr. Stonehill?
So certify.
Ms. Cupka?
So certify.
Mr. Granger?
So certify.
Kathy Binder, so certify. We are back in section. Dr. Young, we have allocation requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll stand by while Chris puts the presentation up. All right. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors for entertaining a third work session for the spend plan for the CARES Act funding. You'll see in the audience that we do have directors here that do have department requests. It's just like the CIP process and the work session number one will basically take a CIP-like approach to county department requests, which I have before you is a couple of things. First, I sent you all the original packet updated with newer requests. And in that packet had full-blown descriptions and justifications for the project that they're requesting. Then you have right here in front of your spreadsheet, which is a running code of all the county department requests and schools requests that have been submitted to the administration office since the first work session. If you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see highlighted in yellow are the new submissions. If it's not highlighted in yellow, then it was a part of the original request packet that the board entertained at work session number one. Next slide. Here's our agenda. Next slide. As always, we'd like to provide the board a suggested recommendation for spending the second allocation of funding. So if you'll see, we're asking or recommending that the board consider dedicating $250,000 of this new allocation of CARES funding towards public safety payroll. We have, we're recommending $105,000, $68 of county department purchases. The board has already approved $709,415 for schools. If you recall, the first portion of the school allocation, which included childcare my five, was captured in the first allocation of funding. So the work session that we had at work session number three was $709,415. And that's going to be captured and reflected in the second allocation of funding. The board also approved at that work session number three, $25,000 worth of funding for COVID-19 testing for county employees. That includes county employees, constitutional offices, service authority, basically county government wide. And we'll be recommending that the board consider hazard duty pay of $275,000 for public safety employees. Next slide. Or I'm sorry, I stand by. Any questions or concerns?
Go ahead.
Okay. Next slide. So please bear with me. We want to have some redundant slides. And I'm just trying to keep a presentation and a spreadsheet that's consolidated with all of our activities since discussing the CARES Act spending. So we'll have that for our record keeping. So some of these slides will have requests like from the treasurer that was already approved. And we'll just skip by them when we hit slides of that nature.
One question, Dr. Young. Since we have representatives from some of these departments, can we, I would like to stop after each one that we could ask questions specific to that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And first up is solid waste and recycling. The front of the long in the spreadsheet, but we put on, in the front of the presentation because Jeff Jenkins has a ride coming from out of town. And we want to make sure that he can get out in the time and fashion. So Jeff, you're up.
Yeah. All right. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the board. What I propose is six new containers for Sillston, so we can get the open back up on Sundays. We're open up from eight to 12. Was that Sillston? It's a half a day, but it guarantees that I'll have space by getting six more containers. I can't do nothing with Perkins because that's a whole different beast. But this will get us back open on Sundays for at least a half a day. But if we were able to purchase these six containers, the price you get is $6,677.22 per container. That's including freight. So the total is $40,063.32.
What was the total? $6,000? What for?
So.
Do we have any questions? I have no problem. I know Perkins is very small and probably could not take any more containers, correct?
It's nothing. Because of that, it's a big hole. I mean, I just don't have nowhere to put. Where I'll pull the container Saturday evening or whatever, whenever we get full up there. I can pull them and put them somewhere in the landfill and then bring more back in.
One question on Sundays will be the old hours or same?
We're going to be, usually we're going to try eight to 12 to have a day on Sunday just to see. Because I don't want to open it completely up and then we fill up. These is eight to 12. It is, I know we can make eight to 12.
Okay. Anybody? Cupka?
Thank you. How fast can you make this happen?
As soon as we get approval to spend the money, it's four to six weeks for containers to show up. So we're probably going to add maybe some first part of November before the holidays hit.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Young, do you want us to vote on each item individually and then you tally it? Or give a consensus on each item or each department?
Yeah, you know what? Just make it nice and clean. Yeah, if we do a public vote into each department, that way we can.
Okay. All right. For solid waste and recycling, anybody have a motion?
I move to approve $40,063 of the expenditures from the CARES funding for the purchase as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
All right, Chris, next slide. All right, next slide. Next slide. All right, next we have Parks and Recreation, Mr. Chris Clark.
As I discussed in the previous work session, there were some staffing costs that were related to COVID and assisting the county school system with lunches that had not occurred yet. So I didn't predict them. That total for the period between the last meeting and August 14th was $3,290. It was paid from the Recreation Activity Fund. And our hope is that you'll be able to return that money from the CARES Act to that fund so we can serve our participants better.
I have two questions on there. For trail maintenance, is that to repair at Sedell Brooks Junior Park? The walking trail?
Yes, the trail maintenance there was an item from the first presentation about Sedell Brooks Junior Park.
Okay.
Actually, I have a question as well. The ADA doors openers, I know last time we had declined it. But I know with Parks and Rec now hosting some students for the distance learning, I don't know if there's any students who have a need for it. But I just wondering, you know, at that point, if we're now have some kids coming in and there is need, you know, might be a better justification to stay down.
Yeah, I would like to add that.
Yeah.
More people use Sedell Brooks Junior Park to walk back. The ADA openers.
The students we have now, I don't have, I've not been told of any needs and have not noticed that there's any needs. More likely, when we are back to normal, we have more needs for those things with seniors and those that are disabled that are in our usuals. Participants, especially with the Rappiyan Agency on Aging, their Healthy Generations program.
What do you guys think about keeping the trail maintenance and ADA door openers plus the staffing cost? Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Obviously, I agree with the staffing cost. And I can see the ADA door openers. I'm sorry, I just can't agree with the trail maintenance. But as far as the ADA door openers, I'm in favor of adding that.
And board, if I may, I was just having a sidebar with Matt. I know that you all are having this, the ADA is good if the board wants to move that way. But Matt had a question regarding the trail. Chris, how much are you usually spending on maintenance on a trail annually, if any?
From my budget, zero. I don't know, Mr. Muncy, he's shaking his head no, that he has no money for that either. There's an unbudgeted portion of our parks.
Madam Chair, the typical justification for these would be, and you could imagine, like Sheriff Sierra see him, he says, hey, I'm making 500 more calls in a six-month period because of COVID-19. And as a result, I need another vehicle because I'm going to burn out a vehicle or what have you. That would be similar to the trail. We normally send, spend 57 hours a month. Trail maintenance, we're now spending 162. Therefore, the delta is X. And so I need X times such and such dollars. I would say that if that justification was available and could be made, that is brought for the board prior to accepting this. I wouldn't be able to defend it before OIG or Treasury otherwise.
But the ADA door openers are a yes? Can they defend that?
Yes, because they directly are relating to the opening of the doors remotely.
Cupka? Madam Chair, thank you. I agree with the ADA doors and the staffing costs that Mr. Clark is requesting. As much as I would love to do something for Sedell Brooks Park, I know I'm seeing more people there. I walk there, but it doesn't sound like, A, we have a precedent that we can compare to maintenance. And B, we don't seem to have a mechanism by which we can capture the increase in use and therefore stand up to an audit. So I just can't. I'm sorry.
So everybody's good with the staffing and the ADA door openers? So we just need a motion?
I move to approve $9,290 in CARES Act funding for the Parks and Recreation Department for the installation of ADA door openers and for staffing costs as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Chris, next slide. Next slide. Um. Next slide. Wait, I'm sorry. That's a, I'm sorry, that's an old slide. That's the carryover for the original presentation. The board had already declined the, they approved, you all approved the portable radios and y'all declined the 911 lines. So there's no, there's no additional request to consider.
Yes.
I'd actually like to revisit the true up 911 lines. Was that, was that approved or was that recolined?
No, that's, no, what I'm trying to, because up there, I'm reading it, is two times pro trul be decline and the other two, they were all. Dr. Young? Go ahead, finish.
I'm sorry. The reason, the reason why it was declined was because this true-up reflected costs that were built over the true-up of lines over fiscal years 17, 18, I believe. And we received the invoice in 2020. So we had, we was asking, I was just asking that again. We couldn't have paid this expense in 17, 18 because it didn't exist until the invoice was generated. And it was generated in 2020. So do we not consider that a 2020 expense versus?
The Treasury, Treasury did issue a recent FAQ on that. And the issue is not when, because a lot of people are asking that question, it's a legitimate question. It's not when the service was invoiced for, but when the service was delivered. And it has to be delivered by December the 30th or reasonably contemplated within like a month, they said. They said certainly in January would be fine. That's what the FAQ said. But saying going back two years, it's something that I think Motorola who just threw at us and they're truing up their bill. There was a contract. truing up their bill. There was a contract, we were sort of looking at the contract, whether that's even feasible. It's not a lot of money, but I don't see how we could say it's COVID-related when it struck before a novel virus.
So it's, it has to be in the COVID time, let's put it that way.
Definitely would have to be in the COVID time, yeah.
Mr. Ranger?
I was just going to ask, I knew Dr. Young that you'll be going through since we'll have another work session, but I'm not sure what kind of statistics we keep on the patrol vehicles. And just wondering if there would be possible justification if that can be pulled together to justify saying, hey, we're making more calls and it is going to wear them out sooner. So we could justify, I know probably I don't have the information now, so that's why I'm asking maybe just to. Oh, sure. Please. Thank you, sir.
Pretty much it would be the opposite because we're not responding to people's houses. We are using phones and to answer calls service. So we're not responding to any more calls mileage wise because of COVID. We're actually less because of using phones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if we're not able to swing the 9,000 to true up the 911 lines and we previously honored a request for some more portable radios for 8300 or so, do you, can you justify asking for $9,000 for more portable radios? Do you have a need?
Oh, we have a need because the radios are certainly coming to end of life. They're well over 12, 15 years old, the portables are themselves. I mean, I guess I could tie it back into Supervisor Granger was saying that we are answering the calls. Can I tie them to COVID calls? Possibly not, but we are talking more on the radios driving.
Would my colleagues be willing to entertain that?
Yes. One other question I had.
Yeah, you look, yeah.
I think technology is based on the advice, what are called FIAQ, technology is always a safe bet because there are a lot of technologies the sheriff's office depends on that not necessarily every day, but they always have to be prepared for. And one of the things about a pandemic is, is that you have to be ready for an emergency global response. And so in order to do that, we are required by law, I know the sheriff and I worked on the original COOP plan with Moody, but 15, 20 years ago and, and there was no, they said get a COOP plan and didn't send any funding. And now we're told that we have to have this pandemic global response. For me, the communications, I say for me, having read all of the guidance, the communications and technology are always a safe bet for expenditures. And in these particular cases, you're not talking about like a cell phone where you have a year plan or T-Mobile says you have to get a two-year plan, contract, whatever. I guess they don't have contracts, but, and so I think for the technology itself and the radios, I'm very comfortable saying you're always going to be safe purchasing technology, especially in your public works, your fire and rescue and your sheriff and your law enforcement.
Mr. Bush?
So I have a question. So Mr. Britton said something that I keyed upon, pandemic response. So we're buying PPE, which is to respond to or to prevent preventative measures, correct? So in the event of a pandemic, since we're still under a state of emergency, since we don't know how long the governor plans on keeping this going, even though I have a sense it's going to be till right after the election, but given all that, if this is for response and preparedness, could we technically on that premise justify another vehicle for the sheriff's office in the event that the pandemic causes a situation where the sheriff has to execute a shutdown of something? Any needs more vehicles to, at his disposal to be able to actually execute that, that act? Is there anything in FAQs or anything that would address that as far as like preparedness, COVID preparedness?
Yes. And I think Dr. Young has proposed or will propose that you put out a certain amount of money, maybe clear near a million dollars in a contingency fund for a separate distribution and allocation. And I believe that Dr. Young is going to ask the sheriff, ask the public service authority and ask the chief, two of whom are here tonight, to go ahead and do a justification for those responses. One of the things that law enforcement does that nobody sort of recalls until they need them is what's called the community caretaker function. And if there is a disaster or pandemic, you would get on the, the sheriff would have to go and rescue someone from a flood. That's not a crime being committed to water, but still they have to do that. And so you might say, I need a boat, which we bought some years ago, got a boat, also search and rescue going in for children. Some people justify helicopters in large jurisdictions and things like that. So what I think Dr. Young, the answer is yes, and definitely it's addressed. And those things, they just need to be justified. And so I think Dr. Young is going to ask law enforcement and ask the first responders in public works to go through an emergency operations response plan and what would be needed to do that. I also think it's justified because the governor has also said that we can meet virtually through 2021. Sheriff's Office is here, they're at every meeting. Often the sheriff himself is at the meetings. They have to put a cruiser, he parks his cruiser there. There's, if the meeting is very large, you all have requested several deputies to go there. If there was an incident, be it a medical incident or otherwise, hopefully not, there would be a response. And so all of those things would go into that plan. All of them are, all of those, when I say them, those scenarios are addressed and all, and yes, you can prepare for that. We're supposed to be doing that.
Okay, so then we wouldn't address that now in the individual proposal from the sheriff, but Dr. Young's going to come back with a public safety contingency proposal.
I'm not sure he's considering doing that, but that's something that we had talked about.
Okay. Thank you.
One of my questions was laptops, could, if they needed new laptops or fresh for the vehicles? Because I know you've brought that up a lot of times in our CIP.
Right. We, and we just, we just got a new supply last year, so we're.
Well, I'm just, they might need some other ones because of this. I'm just throwing it out there.
We're pretty much, we don't do any working from home, even the admin.
I got you.
So.
Being very honest.
The need is not there.
I just thought I'd ask.
I appreciate that.
Because I know they're expensive too.
So did we want to move forward with allocating more for the radios or did we want to, I don't know how many there were, I don't remember how many there were in there, I guess, too. So I'm assuming that half the prices would have cost.
I'm sorry.
I'm assuming it's going to be half of 8385 for a radio.
4,000 apiece.
Okay. So my colleagues, are you willing to entertain?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to give him four additional. Let's make it six radios total.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just give me a second to make sure I do the math.
All right, I make a motion to approve $16,770 of CARES Act funding to the sheriff's office for the purchase of four additional portable radios.
Wait, is it four total, right?
That's what I said.
Okay, I just wanted to.
I already did two. Yes.
I just wanted to clarify. So the motion is correct.
Okay, hold on though. So his motion was for 16,000 something, but the allocation is 8,385 for two. So that, the figure of 16,000 something would be for a total of four radios, not four additional.
No, no, we already allocated 8,385.
Because Dr. Young started the slide by saying this is the.
So that is already allocated. Perfect.
So I just wanted clarification because we have the slide up there. I wanted to make sure we had to write them out.
All right, he said.
Second. Motion made, properly second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any names? Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Next slide, Chris.
Good evening.
And again, that's a carryover from the old presentation. If you look at the spreadsheet, we are recommending the purchase of the SBCA cylinders that are originally declined.
Okay, so skipping that one, going right to the new ambulance, as you may recall, I don't know if you had taken a look at this year's CIP, we removed that from the request of this year's CIP request and we put it in this request. Every year typically we purchase an ambulance, we have a total of seven. They are only getting busier. They can certainly be tied directly into the COVID pandemic response. I don't think there's going to be any stretch of justification for that. Just did some quick numbers. Since March 16th, we've been keeping track of, of transports. We've had 1,655 total transports in our ambulances, 176 possible COVID patients. We're over 200 residential COVID patients in our county as of today. 19 have them come back confirmed that we transported. And then I'll get into some of the exposure stuff later if asked. But our ambulances are getting certainly more miles. I will say that mechanically speaking, knock on wood, things are well. But we, you know, we're constantly plagued with, with electronic issues, mechanical issues, HVAC issues, and it's a, it's a full-time job just maintaining that fleet. So certainly one thing we want reliable is an ambulance.
Your ambulance too, you have to clean it very thoroughly after a call so that would put it out of service for a little while.
Absolutely.
That's also my concern.
Absolutely.
So having that extra ambulance would help with that.
It sure would.
Anybody? Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is one, and I understand Dr. Young's going to be looking at the public safety contingency, given its direct response with COVID, given like you just pointed out, because of the thorough cleaning after every transport and the limited number we have, that that's one ambulance that's out of service, not just for the hour and a half or a rotation for transport, now additional timing for cleaning. This is one thing that I would like to allocate on, on this, at this point, rather than wait for the contingency, along with the SCBA cylinders.
So I was just asking Mr. Britton, so I was going to share with everyone, I was just wondering if the justification was good enough for right now to make the.
For the ambulance.
Yes, for the ambulance or if we should wait. So I apologize for doing a sidebar there, everyone.
In general, I think what the chief just said is accurate. However, these back of the envelope descriptions, I think, again, Dr. Young is going to have, ask you to set aside approximately $900,000. What the chief did not say was what we heard publicly from then regional Virginia Department of Health Director, Dr. Stern, and he said, you don't need to know where every single person in King George County is who has COVID-19 because the protocol is that you make every single call in full PPE, which they have to throw away and clean as though it was a COVID-19 call. That is what the head of then head of the regional department of health ordered them to do. And that is the impact. What you heard now is there's, you know, tens of thousands of calls and then confirmed on the backend are dozens and dozens of calls. And so that doesn't sound real justified. That's why I think that perhaps if kind of ministry, not my place, but were to say, I have this money, could you please give a written justification? Then you'll get into every single call, how many people, how much PPE gets used, the, how much cleaning time, how many hours, what that ambulance goes for. Getting the ambulance as equipment is certainly justified as long as it, it wouldn't supplant something else. I think an important thing the chief said illegally as well is it was removed from the CIP for this year. So it isn't as though it was in there and you denied it and now we're putting it in. But I, I mean, if you had to do it, like if you had to spend the money this minute, I would say it's justifiable, but I would say that you all will be better off going down the road and I can help justify it if there were an audit. I don't expect one, but if there were an audit, if you had a written justification from the chief, it sounds like he's got it. But doing some quick and quick numbers, as he just said, I think probably is a lot, is a lot safer bet. And I know that there are other large allocations and requests as well that would go into that $900,000 reserve. And I don't think because of the nature of purchasing an ambulance, it's not like he's going to say, hey, if I don't get it tonight, I won't have it tomorrow.
How long does it take for it to get an ambulance?
That's a great question. It's about nine months.
Yeah, we'd have to see that. That's part of the justification. I'm sorry to dig around. I thought you pointed to me. Because the delivery of the goods, it's not the expenditure of the funds, it's the delivery of the goods. And now what you're doing is replacing an ambulance. And I really have to dig deep in that based on the justification, whether or not, you know, you can, you can probably put a new engine in an ambulance and a new transmission in ambulance, but to order one that you're getting, we're presuming there might be another distribution next year and that might fall within it, but the order is, is probably going to be pretty hard to defend.
Bush?
No.
Oh, Mr. Bush.
So I was right there with you, Mr. Bush, until that timeframe was given for when we would have it. And then my other question was going to be, even if we got it in time within the timeframe, do you have the staffing for it? Do you have personnel that you can
So we staff three.
Pay in another bus? I mean.
Well, it, what it would do would go and it would replace one and they're rotated. We staff three ambulances 24 hours a day. I will tell you, checking with our vendor suppliers, they have been inundated with ambulance orders. So from other localities due to CARES. So they're, they, you know, how that wait time fits into the matrix, I think is a great question, especially, you know, are we going to be dealing with COVID-19 nine months from now? Maybe we will, maybe we won't. But nevertheless, it's, it's a staff three of them and we rotate them because one thing that we do know is that when we have an ambulance go out of service, oftentimes Murphy's Law is you don't just have one, you have several go out of service at the same time. The citizens expect us to still respond to 911 calls. We have that duty and we just can't call up the interstate rental and say, we need to, can you rent us an ambulance? So we have to, we have to have a, some backups.
Bush?
Thank you. So again, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Britton said earlier, pandemic response. Okay. So while I appreciate Mr. Britton's legal opinion, I, I guess I'm feeling foggy, however you want to call it. Either we buy an ambulance now in this process with the possibility of this being funded through CARES Act, or we wait through the CIP process and we wind up purchasing an ambulance through capital funds. At the end of the day, if we get audited and the government comes back and says, well, that ambulance wasn't a valid purchase, we're recouping the money, they recoup the money that we were going to spend in our CIP, in our capital fund. So I think the justification is there.
I believe Chief Moody said it was, they had removed the purchase from the CIP and actually it was in there. That would actually be just, we would not be able to justify that because it would be an expenditure.
Right. It can always be added next year, which is probably the tone of truth for the audit.
So I know this year, we're not going to be entertaining it, but I'm sure Chief will be asking for next year because it'll be need. But I don't disagree with you on principle, but I would like to wait and see if we can get better justification and then see if we can allocate it at that point. I don't, I don't want to pull the trigger. That's a big dollar figure to allocate right now.
It is. I would just, I would just like to say that when, when we're doing that justification, let's give consider, considerable consideration to pandemic response capabilities as well, not just justification of we've ran so many calls. It's how are we postured as a county to respond should this happen again or should this continue? So.
So we can bring it up in the next work session that we're going to have. Because by that time, we would be able to get a justification for it.
And Madam Chair, you know, we can ask too, and the localities are asking, they don't always give an FAQ, but what Chief Moody just said is correct, which is why I would like to see the justification and then run it down with him and Dr. Young, which is to say, let's reach out to those, I'm making up numbers. is to say, "Let's reach out to those, making up numbers, there's 127 jurisdictions in Virginia, some of them are consolidated of those, let's just say 50 have put in orders for ambulances and they're under CARES Act." I'd like to get with the folks that I know there, and Chief Moody can do his contacts and Dr. Young, and see, why is that? Why did they justify it? Have they said that? And then are they asking for an FAQ on that, to say, "Hey, look, we are ordering this as a replacement, because we're running our other ones into the ground," and then I can give you much more solid foundation.
I think something else to, to, to add to the justification is, we don't have a hospital in King George. So the, these ambulances are basically acting in those type capacities. So that, that is our medical, it's either urgent care or an ambulance in King George County. So I think that's something that needs to be captured in that justification.
Mr. Bush?
So again, I really want to get behind this tonight, but I'm looking at page three of the updated September 2nd guidance, and under number one, the fourth bullet point says, "Emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation related to COVID-19." It doesn't say related to a, any pandemic. And so that's why I just want to be a little more cautious and wait until we get some better guidance from our public safety professionals, that's all. But I fully support it, I do, but I just think we need a little bit more justification.
Is everyone on board with the SCBA cylinders?
Yep.
Then I make a motion to approve $18,000 of CARES Act funding for the fire and rescue department for the purchase of spare SCBA cylinders as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any needs? Chair votes, I'm motion cares. Thank you.
I'll talk about the other things.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
No, there's other, there were other items on the list. Do you want me to mention those? Okay, all right, sorry, sorry.
For yours again.
So, so the, the next one is the, is the door locks, and that price of $302,000 was actually, we had gotten an updated price of $225,000. And this is really not so much of a fire, rescue and emergency services project, but these are to upgrade all your door locks at Rivercombe Building, the current courthouse, and all three of your fire stations. And so what we currently use, and Mike could probably speak more intelligently about this than myself, but this is an older technology, and when it runs into problems, it's very expensive to replace. And all of the, all of the access control has to be done manually through a tablet or laptop. There is no wireless, like we have at the sheriff's office, they have the new technology. But these older buildings were done, we got a grant for this building and the courthouse in Company One, post 9/11. And so that's how emergency services, it was a Homeland Security Grant that funded these current locks that are on this building. Access control and physical security can be tied into COVID preparedness. There's been other places that have done it. You have more direct access to, to locking down doors, to controlling the different flow of people getting to where they need to go and, and such than what you have now. But eventually, these locks right here are going to fail, they're going to run into problems, you're going to have to upgrade them, and it's, it's going to be a costly measure. So that may be another thing we can certainly look, if it's the board's desire, we can, you know, look at a justification or something that can work. Might be a stretch, and might not, but...
And, and that's why we did have to decline on there, because we felt that it is a stretch how we are directly tying this to coronavirus. So that's why I'm trying to wrap my head around how we could make that justifiable, and that was the reason for the CEO review.
So I am actually against this one, because if it's covering Rivercombe, but then the courthouse, that we don't know how long we're going to be in there, what the future use is.
Right.
And our three firehouses, Company Two, we don't know how long they're going to be in there, where their future site is. You know, $225,000 is a large sum to allocate against something when two of the four or five facilities that we're looking at doing this at might not be viable in the next couple of years, you know, because, because we're making changes infrastructure-wise. So because of that amount and how much it would take away from our flexibility to apply to other areas, I would be against this one.
I'm not out against it. I would like to see the justification. If you can make it work, I'm willing to entertain it, but that's the key, and how, how justifiable it is, if we could stand on it. I'll leave that to Mr. Britton and Dr. Young and yourself to...
Bring that one around then.
And I will tell you, when we, when we, when we were tasked with this, it was, you know, kind of out-of-the-box critical thinking, you know, how, how can we, how can we take some things that we may need to replace in the future and, and be able to look at tying it in there? It may get, you know, may, may certainly not raise up to the measure that we want to entertain it, but it's a proposal, so. And Mike can, Mike can maybe talk more about that, or I'll, you know, we can work on the justification together.
Well, Chief, I really would like, I'm sure our board would like you to see if you can bring that back to the next work session.
Sounds good. The, the last one we have on here was a mobile video trailer, and this is, this is a mobile, basically surveillance tower, if we had to, you know, look at remotely the flow of people coming in and out and being able to tie that into COVID. There's currently a state Homeland Security Program grant request for that piece of equipment, where they would just, they purchased the actual equipment and would deliver it to us. But that would be a joint use between our Department and Sheriff's Office. So, you know, whether that's, you feel it's tied into COVID preparedness and response and pandemic response, it's, you know, something we could, we could write a justification for if you desire. If you don't, then that's certainly fine too.
What, what kind of timeframe, if it were to be purchased, would it have on delivery?
That I don't know.
Okay.
I would, I would, my anticipation would be that it would probably be several months out.
Okay.
And most likely after the new year. And I, I would say out of, out of the, the items in question, the ambulance would be the priority out of, out of the locks and the...
Tracking.
So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Chief, could you, since you're already going to be working on a justification for the ambulance and maybe the door lock system, could you just prepare a justification for all of them, so that in the event, as Mr. Britton said, there might be a possibility after the new year for another round of funding? We already have your justification in place, so then we have a much faster process of trying to meet your requests.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I, I'm not a big fan of the mobile video trailer either.
Gotcha.
But thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Next slide. Chris, you're up.
One end of the room to the other.
Good evening, members of the board. My item that Dr. Young has highlighted is for the smooth library. In the wake of COVID and the distance learning, we would like to get them outfitted with new WAFs, wireless access points. Also, for the outside of the building, where if there are times when possibly the library might be closed, I know they have really long hours, but those times they could be closed, parents could drive their kids, they could sit in the parking lot, and they can connect to the Wi-Fi and go to their Canvas sites from their car if they had to when the library was closed. On the inside, we have some infrastructure things that we're going to be doing through our redundancy project, as you have given the go-ahead for the past year. We're going to be replacing their firewalls and their switches, so we're going to get brand-new WAFs to go along with the new firewalls for that purpose, so we can like to tie all that in and to provide them the services that they need for the kids.
I know Mr. Dines will be coming back to revisit a lot of your items in our next work session, but I'm just wondering about the cybersecurity, since we had our issue with the schools, that might be more pertinent now as opposed to waiting for the next work session.
Madam Chair, there's nothing, the only thing that I, legally that you have to worry about on any of this, Mr. Dines and I have traded some emails on some of this, I follow this very closely, but cybersecurity and data privacy as a result of COVID-19, there is ubiquitous and copious amounts of warnings coming out from every single federal and state agency about, "You got to get your, your, your house in order with respect to this." The phishing, the scams, the things that are coming out are unbelievable, and, and they change every day. These folks know what they're doing, and we traded a couple of emails. There's no question that all of that will be justifiable. The only issue legally that you have to look at on any of these, in my opinion, is are there any contracts, like via endpoint protection or whatever, that are going to go beyond December the 30th, that you couldn't otherwise get? If that's all you can get, then that's a year contract, then, then so be it. And, and the FAQs address that. But if, if you can get a six-month or a month-to-month, then you can only pay up through January is the latest thing. But all this other stuff, I'm not saying it should be approved in any way, shape or form, there are good reasons to decline it, I'm sure, I have nothing to do with that, but legally, all this is going to be justifiable. Technology here, because of COVID-19, because of COVID-19, we have a local emergency, we have virtual meetings mandated, and they are mandating both cybersecurity and data privacy. Fire and rescue, sheriff's office is collecting what they call PII, Personally Identifiable Information. You heard, there was a big tumult in just right almost, not physically, with VDH to get more information, and they were concerned about giving it to law enforcement and King George Fire and Rescue for some reason. And part of that concern and justification that we heard was cyber, cyber sec and data privacy, which, which are mandated. And so as a result of that, I don't think you'll ever have an issue with any of these, I don't know about what the body temperature reader is, except for that one, with any of these type of security, I mean, excuse me, upgrades, including in this room, microphones, anything like that, because as you've seen at each of our meetings, people are complaining, "I can't see the slides, I can't hear the speaker." So legally, I just, thank you for the time, you're not going to have a concern with this except for a service contract.
Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
So Madam Chair, looking at this, all the items that were declined, I actually like everything one here except for two. One would be the AV upgrade with the whiteboards. I don't, I don't see justification for $40,000 for the whiteboards. And then again, back to my concern from previous meetings about the body temperature reader, that's something that has to be calibrated or something. I'm not, I'm not keen on that purchase for that amount. However, everything else that was previously declined on this slide, I would be apt to approve.
Any other thoughts from my colleagues?
Mr. Dines, Associate Cybersecurity, ISSO Services, would, do you know the timeframe on those services that, that purchase would be going for?
That would be as soon as we were approved. I've, I've highlighted those things in my notes here tonight. I know Dr. Young and I, and our whole IT team has a cybersecurity meeting we're having in-house next week. So with the advent of what happened at our schools, so that's a, that's a priority, that's what keeps IT directors and staff up at night. We have a decent building block with our cybersecurity. We have a company that's in Ashland that helps us with that. And what they do is, instead of you hiring a virtual, instead of hiring an information security officer who'd be on-site and part of the staff, which is, these days, $150,000, $160,000 a year. So they supplement what that person would do. So right now, we have 365 24/7 coverage, where they will let us know if something is going on. They have a device that's connected to our network right on the outside that's keeping track of who's trying to come in, who's trying to use passwords from our users, who's trying to tunnel in, and they have oversight that we can be rest assured. But what I have in this presentation is a step beyond that, where they even do the investigations, the compliance and the risk assessments. Right now, I usually, if something ever happens, like with, like Mr. Britton mentioned about emails and people clicking on emails, I usually present that to the Virginia Fusion Center, and that's a consortium in the state that helps counties with their cybersecurity. And when something happens, they'll lead you through how to get rid of what got through and how to prepare you in the future to keep it from happening again. So this first part was like a first year, and you can, I can put the rest of that in my normal budget after COVID is over. Is that true, Mr. Britton? Could I do that? Could I have it put in now? And then I can write that into my budget for the future.
Yes. The only thing that you're allowed to do and not do, what you just, yes, is answering, but what you said is, is to have a reasonable overflow, and what they said that January would be okay, if you get a six-month contract. If you could only get a year contract and you couldn't get it otherwise, I'm, I, no one knows, but I'm sure that would be defensible under the, the cyber sec. But yes, then you would have to begin to pay for a cell phone or whatever thereafter. And by the way, I did want to mention that the DocuSign is sort of, is, is going to be mandated soon. They're going to, they're going to tell people not to show up to sign stuff. Right now, you still have to sign deeds and things like that, but the DocuSign may seem, that, that's actually super important from, and makes things a lot easier from a legal perspective. Everybody else uses it anyway, I didn't know we didn't have it, but it's a use all the time, but that, that's also quite important for me, actually. I don't have a request, but I hope you get that.
Also, Committee Development Office, I believe they were with their new software that they were trying to get coming up here soon, that they would have something like that, so that the people wouldn't have to sign all their permits, they could do that online, the Coletta Counties are doing that now.
Yeah, I would also, I know we've discussed before, the, the top one, the boardroom module, that would help it so that the audience could hear us better, especially with phone calls coming into the boardroom, and the cameras, especially the integrated camera, were tuned right into the microphone, so it would be, people can hear better in the viewing and catalogs, so it just creates it so that, I don't know, you don't have that big view, and it would go right to the person and you could hear them better.
This, Bender, do you, should we go line by line through the, the ones that were declined and try to come to consensus of which ones the boards might want to have?
And then make a motion for all of them together?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I'd agree. I also have an explanation more for Mr. Bush and the elevated body temperature device.
I'll go down and I'll write them all.
You don't have to try and convince me.
So the first one is a boardroom, is that VD or VO IP?
Voiceover.
Okay, module. What does everybody think on that? I'm going to write them down and make a motion.
I'm, I'm in agreement on that one.
What that will do is, right now, of course, you know, we have our citizens that listen to the meetings online, and then they'll come through the speaker system, but we would like to get more control over that process, and they will put that device into our audiovisual rack, and it will, since we have voice from system here now, we'll be able to have a number, they will call that number, and then we're going to have a call queue. That way, everyone will be prompted, instead of people talking all at once, trying to give their public comment.
I, I vote yes for that one.
Yep.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm concerned, because we had estimated about $976,000 left, and... and that was with the proposed, and I'm seeing that we have additional costs, so I haven't had a chance to see what that number is down to. But if we, if we said nothing and move forward, just approving all of these purchases like boardroom VoIP module and cameras, and came down to a total of like $397,000, that's almost slightly over 40% of what's left is absorbed. And we haven't had a chance to have a real deliberate conversation with the staff and our sister agencies identifying needs. I'm pretty concerned about if we make, if the board makes decisions, you know, spend this money on all of these non-cybersecurity issues, that could be taken away about something that dropped a weekly lie identified as pressing, and we don't even know it yet because we haven't had those conversations.
Hold on, Ms. Cupka wanted to say something. Go ahead.
So I, I do agree with you about the technology improvements, but I also would like to slow down, and tonight I'd like to just move forward with the SMUT library request for $25,000 and the three cybersecurity requests for $60,000, $46,000, $80,000, and $31,200 because it just happened yesterday.
Would you be amenable to adding the DocuSign for $300? Because Mr. Britton mentioned that that's going to start becoming mandated, and it's a pretty small amount.
Yes.
Okay. Is everyone else amenable to that?
I'm fine with that. I still want to add in the first one for the voice module, because I know that's very important, especially for the phone calls for our meetings.
I would say, let's wait.
All right.
If we wait, it sounds like we can't buy it, because we will have another session. So.
But that's one I really want to look at for our next one.
I think that's fair. But I think Dr. Young.
Mr. Stonehill, Mr. Bush?
I mean, if this is COVID-related and we are having meetings in the auditorium, but we are having meetings here too, so are other bodies. I'm looking at $12,750, $31500 for addressing the boardroom. Of course, I'm not including the boardroom integrated cameras, but I'm looking at the videographer equipment, laptop and equipment upgrade. That's what people are looking at online when they're participating in our meetings virtually. So while I agree with Ms. Cupka on adding the cybersecurity and Mr. Granger on the DocuSign, and I think we're all in agreement about the SMUT library, I personally would like to add the first four line items for the boardroom, but not the $54,400 line item. But those first four, which I believe would be able to enhance our virtual meeting capabilities, not just for us, but for other bodies.
Three of those four have already been approved from the previous.
Were those funded? All right, so it would just be the first one?
It would be the VoIP module.
Okay, yeah, so I would like to include the VoIP module.
I would like to include that too, because I think that's really important for our viewers that watch it, especially those that are, cannot come to our meetings and have to watch it virtually.
Mr. Stonehill, Ms. Cupka, were you both amenable to that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll go for that, yep.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Granger.
Since I cut off Chief Moody, I just want to make sure I'm not going to cut off Mr. Dines as well. Did you have anything else you wanted to present, Mr. Dines?
I was only going to provide an explanation just for your posterity, Mr. Bush. For the first time, you were worried about the possible air that would affect the temperature reading that would be elevated. And I've talked to our people, and our people said the device reads skin temperature, not air. So although air temperature can sometimes influence normal skin temperature, that's usually not the case when someone has an elevated body temperature or fever caused by a pathogen. These devices can be manually calibrated when and if desired. It's not something you're going to do on a regular basis, but they do test them when they're installed. Just for your information, that's all.
No, doesn't address my question.
Is that all you?
Mr. Stonehill adds.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dines, the, at the library, does that reach out the whole parking lot? That directional that dangles out to the parking lot for that hotspot or whatever you call it?
Yeah, when COVID first happened and the library decided, we're not going to close, we're going to see if people would want to come close to the library and sit out in a car. So we had one that was in the window that's with the current Fortinet system that they have. But this one, we wanted to put outside. There's three, so one could reach that front where the kids drive up, and there's some parking spaces there. But we wanted to be able to reach the big parking lot out back. So we were going to put two there so that could get almost that whole parking lot, because there's a big span of area that those things can cover, the new ones can. So.
It's like a directional antenna type thing that you directed?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I move to approve $174,580 of CARES Act funds to the IT department for the purchase of the boardroom VoIP module, the cybersecurity ISSO services, cybersecurity endpoint protection, cybersecurity email security, the DocuSign software, and the web expansion for the SMUT library.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that. My math was the same.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dines.
Thank you.
Give you a second to calculate there, Dr. Young. Listen, I gave him a second to calculate.
The first thing I'd ask for is internet to the shop currently right now. My office is shared at the landfill. I have a desk there with the internet. The shop is where I keep my main office, my files and everything. I also keep all the sanitizing equipment there, hand sanitizer, disinfectant spray, the wipes, bleach, all that, so I keep that locked up. I feel if I had the internet there and my office were there, I could disperse that equipment a lot quicker and more efficient. The other stuff, the two others is just PPEs. Right now, we don't have any of that. We actually borrowed some of the coveralls from Service Authority when we had to come in the building and disinfect from a possible infection. The other two are electrostatic disinfecting guns. Those, right now, you can come into a room or a building and one person could spray it down, and it doesn't leave any residue or anything. So I was asking for two of those. Where, right now, if I were to have to come in here and disinfect, I have to bring like four guys in here, and like I said, we wipe out, you know, everything, and it's time-consuming, where this will just definitely cut the time down, and it does a better job.
How many respirators is that for?
I think I priced four.
Four?
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Cupka.
So how many hooded coveralls does that buy you?
It's two packs, 25 each. They're disposable.
And do you think that's sufficient or would you like double that?
Right now, I mean, because we've only used them one time so far.
And then have, have you done any research into the use of UV light or disinfecting rooms, areas?
Yeah, I haven't.
Would you mind looking into that for next work session, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
They even make wands. I had one that you can take the UVA wand and swipe it. Might be something.
I know they do the air scrubbers too for the HVAC units, so I've looked into that.
Yeah, that's something that a lot of the healthcare providers are using to sanitize the patient rooms and restrooms after patients use them. So if you could, that's great.
Okay, we'll do it.
Yeah, I've seen the wands. They come small, big, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have a motion?
I move to approve $18,715 of CARES Act funding to the general properties for the project as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Next slide. As you'll see in the back of your packet, United Way has updated their proposal. They submitted a proposal originally for work session number one, but it really didn't define what they intended to do with the money or what did they do for King George or what amount of money that they were requesting. So I included their request in a comprehensive PDF that I sent you all, and they are requesting $30,000 allocated to them.
So it's not in the paper copy?
It's in the PDF that I emailed you all.
In the email, okay.
And the staff recommended, I'm sorry, I recommended denial with the intent to recommend that they be advised of either a small business grant program or if the board is so inclined that we move forward with a nonprofit grant program, we make them aware of that.
Yeah, I would agree to decline that also.
Me too.
I'm sorry, I'm still not seeing it. So it's not in the PowerPoint presentation, it's in the docu that says county department requests updated PDF?
Yes.
Okay.
Page 42 is about where you get to the point where they start going through some of the things they've done in the actual request.
Dr. Young, you said it was $30,000 they were asking?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's another good point that Matt brought up. Just like the YOC, we couldn't really give them anything in our profit. It had to be a pass through.
Yeah, so we still, they're not a political subdivision, so we still would have to give it to the EDA and have them administer it, so we can't approve that tonight anyway.
All right, so we'll move on to the next one. That is decline.
Next slide. And then finally, on board, I would like to recommend that the board consider allocating $275,000 of the funding towards hazard duty pay. That pay will be reserved for public safety officials, and those public safety officials are defined as the same positions that we had identified in the compensation, I'm sorry, the public safety compensation plan that we had put together for the board to, that was, we halfway funded for fiscal year 2021 budget. That would include sheriff's deputies, animal control, EMT, firefighters.
I have no problem with that.
The justification behind that is twofold. Number one, we have been experiencing an increase in confirmed cases in our public safety offices, so we are now realizing that as a real and imminent threat to our public safety officials. And then, number two, there is an increasing amount of surrounding localities that are taken on hazard duty pay. And of course, if we want to remain competitive, then we need to respond in kind. $275,000, I estimate equates to about $3,000 per employee, but naturally, we are asking that it be earmarked today. That would give Sheriff Giles, Chief Moody, and myself an opportunity to put together a deliberate plan, and we'd make sure that it's a plan that keeps the compensation and keeping with our regional neighbors and surrounding localities.
Mr. Bush?
So I obviously don't have a problem with this, but I do have a general concern along with everything else. When you initiate something like we're now going to be providing Wi-Fi at the SMUT library extended in the parking lot, we're providing daycare for county employees, for school employees, we're now looking at hazardous duty pay. And for this COVID period, hazardous duty pay, obviously, I'm in favor of it, but to my concern is, I've never seen a government program that has been instituted and then taken away. What happens when the funding runs out? What, when this deadline comes up? How long are we going to keep hazardous duty pay going? How long are we going to keep Wi-Fi going at, if our extensions of SMUT library? You know, how long are we going to keep daycare going for schools and county employees? That's all I'm saying, is things that we need to start considering, because that's some hard calls we're going to have to make. At some point, we're going to have to say, okay, turn it off, because we can't afford to, I mean, we can do these things now because we have this money that we have to spend, but remove that money out of the picture, our financial situation doesn't allow for these things. That's just reality. So it's just some food for thought that I wanted to bring up. With that said, thank you for putting that together. I fully support the hazardous duty pay.
Mr. Britton, I have a question. Is that allowable to have hazard duty pay? It is? Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I want to make it clear, just for the record, originally, I was against hazard pay. I think Chief Moody will tell you that we did a lot of headbutting on that, because the reality is increasing inequity between public safety employees and the general government employees. And a further divide even after, you know, pay increases that were given to public safety and the general government employees didn't receive the funding. However, after further discussions and deliberations on it and the reality that we are currently, you know, facing now, we decided that we was going to move forward with a recommendation for hazard duty pay. Would love to provide it to general government employees, because we have been asked about it by general government employees, but in FAQs, who qualifies for hazard pay is deliberately defined, definitively defined in the FAQ, and it is a very limited scope, so we just can't offer it to administration-wide.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I move to approve the $275,000 of CARE Act funding to be allocated towards hazard duty pay as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Dr. Young?
And next slide. So here's our recommended way forward. I'd like to request, I would like to ask the board to provide the staff a date for a fourth work session. In the meantime, while we're getting towards that work session, we'll look at our remaining funding of CARES Act funding, that total, just off a quick manual math, because I didn't have my calculator with me, we have approximately $841,000 remaining. So again, we'll have another discussion with the county department heads to see if there are any needs that are identified within the county departments. We'll also reach out to our sister agencies like the Service Authority and see what needs that they have, and we'll put together a strong recommendation to bring back to the board for you all to consider for the allocation of the last of the funding.
Mr. Bush?
So is that going to include this public safety thing that we discussed earlier?
Yes, sir. And that's going to give us time to, you know, work with sheriff's office and justification and work with that. And just like we did last time, at the next board meeting, we'll bring before the board a resolution appropriating the funds, I mean, adopting the plan and appropriating the funds for allocation. And you saw the bullet point I was spoken at, we'll be reaching out to our sister agencies and seeing what we can do. So I'd like to ask the board for guidance regarding a future date for the fourth work session for the CARES Act plan.
Before we move on, did we approve the public safety payroll $250,000? I don't believe we did that one, did we?
You're absolutely right, sir.
We did not. So that is not in your figures, correct?
I know it's in my figures. We just didn't make a motion.
Mr. Granger, since you're the motion man tonight.
Is everyone amenable? All right, I move to approve and allocate $250,000 of CARES Act funding to public safety payroll as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any names? Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, you said about two weeks out, was it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see what we have on here. I'm looking at the week of the 14th. That's pretty, that's a pretty busy week for us.
Yeah. We've got a Tuesday and a Thursday meeting already.
Yeah. The week of the 21st? I, I can't do the 21st because we have a DSS board meeting.
And I can't do Monday or Tuesday. Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Just. If you need me here, I cannot do that day.
Would you be able to do the 24th, Mr. Britton?
Thursday, 24th?
Yes.
Yes.
Would everyone else be available? I would like to have Mr. Britton here if we can make that happen.
I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. What time?
6:30?
Or do, do we do it earlier?
I'm amenable to earlier.
I'm fine with 5:30 if, if we can make that happen.
Mr. Britton said 6:30 AM. Said?
I'm on my way to work at the point.
5:30 is.
5:30 okay with everyone?
5:30.
Okay. 5:30 then it is.
Madam Chair, I conclude our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. Please just send out an invite as always. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
August, yeah, September 9th. At the Butler House, I'm sorry, let me just pull it back a little. September 9th, at the Butler House.
At 6:30. For the joint?
At 6:30.
I move to adjourn until Wednesday, September 9th, at 6:30 at the Butler House.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any needs, Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are adjourned. Good night.